There's my partner in crime.
All right, good evening everyone. It's October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four at six P. M. The posted time for the night meeting of the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners. At this time, I'll call a meeting to order. Madam Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, sir, we have a quorum.
All right, next, we'll proceed with our pledge of allegiance and certification, which will be led tonight by Ms. Courtney Ashley. Thank you, Courtney.
To the fire of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing all this together and sharing it tonight. So wonderful to see the community's support and care about all the ongoing projects and events that are happening throughout our community. Please keep our community in mind and be with the victims of Hurricane Colleen and Milton as they're continuing to recuperate and recover from the devastation they experienced. Just keep an eye out for our community and thank you so much for everything you do for us.
Next, I'll differ from the agenda slightly. So next, we will recognize any elected officials, but also add any former elected officials that we may have present with us tonight too as well. So if you're an elected official or served in elected capacity in the past, please stand under your seat. Mary?
Mary, I'm the county commissioner.
Richard Hooker, David Cotton, for one education.
Sharon Martin, Mayor Proton, County State.
Thank you, that's it.
Jesse Hornet, registered.
Anyone else? All right, next, we'll recognize any veterans who are present.
Jason Pauls, United States Air Force.
Richard Hooker, U.S. Army.
David Cotton, U.S. Navy.
Johnny Hudson, U.S. Army. I assume that you guys got one of our veterans here. Have you? You need none?
I probably got seven.
Uh, next is recognition of law enforcement.
Danny Howell, please, County Sheriff's Office.
C. Thor, county attorney.
Thank you all, thank you for all you do. And lastly, but not least, we'll recognize any county department heads.
Rebecca Johnson, Social Services, Cary Mill, Assistant County Manager, Courtney Ashley, at North Development.
Chris Morris, please.
Martha Thompson, Legal Department.
Phil Duff, Department of Land.
Jason Pauls, Business Development Director.
Danny Bridges, Solo Water Conservation.
Daniel Orkin, National Public Health Council.
All right, thank you, guys. Commissioners, before us is your motion to approve the proposed agenda. So at this time, I entertain a motion to approve the, uh, to adopt the agenda as proposed.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, motion second to approve the agenda as proposed. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Next item on the agenda, special recognition. At this time, I want to recognize Mr. Richard Hooker. He's gonna come forward and discuss M.D. Week or Minority Enterprise Development Week for two thousand twenty-four.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I was walking in, someone says, is it that time again? Uh, my response is yes, it's that time again. Uh, to Mr. Chairman and members of the Board of Commissioners, again, my name is Richard Hooker, serving as the Executive Director of the Cleveland County Business Development Center. And, uh, before I go into my, uh, presentation, let me also recognize members of our Board of Directors and members of our Cleveland Emerging Leaders Academy who are joining us today. First, I want to recognize our Vice Chair of the Cleveland County Board of, uh, Cleveland, I'm thinking school board, I'm sorry, of, uh, Community Cleveland County Business Development Center. This, uh, Sharon Martin, Bishop Sharon Martin. Also want to recognize, uh, representatives of our Emerging Leaders Academy, Coordinator of Miss Barbara Borders, uh, class participant Laura Borders, class participant, uh, Monika Sen. And these represent, uh, some of the, uh, emerging leaders who hopefully will be, uh, very involved in our community in the future, or, and some already, so let me make sure I clear that. Uh, Mr. Chair, again, thank you for this opportunity to come before you. Um, as you know, Minority Enterprise Development Week has, has, as has been expressed in the past, it's a national observance. It is also a state observance, and it is also a local observance. This year, however, it is a significant occasion in that this year represents twenty-five years that M.D. Week, which is Minority Enterprise Development Week, has been observed in Cleveland County. So that's quite a milestone, uh, one that we are very proud of. One may ask, what is M.D. Week? What is Minority Enterprise Development Week? Well, I wanted to just share briefly some reasons and benefits of why we celebrate Minority Enterprise Development Week. First, it is a source of pride and, and dedication among our members. It is a recognition that all segments of our community has value and are productive contributors to our economy. Thirdly, it is recognized for their, uh, businesses who are involved in risk-taking, sharing their resilience and innovation. It also is a, uh, opportunity to celebrate those who create jobs, who expand local, the local tax base, and strengthen our community capacity. They provide quality products and services, as well as possess those unique talents and skill sets. Uh, this also, M.D. Week businesses, minority businesses, also serve as a model for business, uh, uh, sustainability, as well as a community asset to this community. I would also be remiss, Mr. Chair and members of the Board, if I did not single out one of the county's, uh, minority business, uh, that is also a contributor of, uh, some of the work that the county is doing. They are, of course, a much larger scale, but they are also minority business or, uh, historically underutilized businesses, and that's MetCom. So, uh, they also, even though it is, it is on a larger scale, is considered a historically underutilized or minority businesses that also should be celebrated. And finally, in the words of the Honorable Johnny Huskins, who believes in pulling up your own bootstraps, he often would say, if it is to be, it's up to me. And that is certainly a indication that one should take responsibility for your life and your career, that it all starts from within, and it is also about accountability. And that, uh, Mr. Chair, is what M.D. Week is about, the spirit of if it is to be, it's up to me. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I changed that a little bit. I said, if it's gonna be, it's up to us.
All right. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone.
Appreciate that.
Mr. Hooker, Mr. Hooker, I'd met years ago, and he used that phrase, and I picked up on it, and I added to that, if it's gonna be, it's up to us. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Anybody else have any comments? All right, if not, this time I'll recognize, uh, hold on, we have a proclamation for you.
Yes, sir.
So we're allowed, I asked clerk to read that, and we'll present it to you.
Okay. Minority Enterprise Development Week, November ninth through the sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Whereas Minority Enterprise Development Week has reached a new historic milestone in Cleveland County, with over the past twenty-five years in uplifting and celebrating the impact of minority business enterprises and other humanitarian efforts to make our community better. And whereas, this year's theme, The New Wave of Entrepreneurial Leadership, continues to highlight and recognizes the unique talents, resilience, and aspirations of a future generation of business and community leaders who are committed to strengthening our state and local economy. And whereas, the Cleveland County Business Development Center in collaboration with the Cleveland Emerging Leaders Academy and other local sponsors have teamed up for a week dedicated to empowering minority businesses and other community stakeholders to raise awareness, build capacity, encourage self-sufficiency, and foster success. And whereas, the annual observance of Minority Enterprise Development Week in Cleveland County will again bring together a diverse group of small business owners, emerging leaders, nonprofit groups, faith-based and community stakeholders, with a lineup of engaging workshops, networking events, and awards gala to connect, engage, and propel future leaders to help make an invaluable difference in our local community. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim November ninth through the sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four, as Minority Enterprise Development Week in Cleveland County, in recognition of the cooperative efforts of the above sponsoring organizations and individuals to enhance, promote, and support the success of minority businesses and other community partners, adopted this the fifteenth day of October, two thousand twenty-four.
Sir, can I ask you all you do? Yes, sir. All right. All right, next, it's also an honor to recognize, uh, Mary, after my previous county commissioner's gonna come forward. Mary also served as the President of the County Association of County Commissioners at some point in her career as well, and is here tonight to present the two thousand twenty-four Cleveland County Fair Queen.
Good evening, Commissioners. Continuing in the path of the pageant founder, Ms. Helen Borders, the Commission for Women were honored to sponsor the pageant once again and witness the crowning of Belle Westbrook as the historic Miss One Hundredth Cleveland County Fair Queen. Belle will come following the introduction. Belle is the daughter of Rin and Bryson Westbrook. Her mom is present with us tonight. She is a senior at Burns High School. School involvement includes cheering on the Burns High Cheer Team for four years and is a senior captain this year. She enjoys competition cheer and has competed at the World's Nationals in Orlando two times. Belle is a member of both the Beta Club and National Honor Society and is an active member in FFA. She enjoys competing in livestock showing and judging, currently ranked fifth in the state in livestock judging. Her favorite FFA event of the year is happening with Farm Day for the students at North Shelby. Community involvement includes being a Girl Scout for twelve years, earning her bronze and silver awards, and is currently working towards her gold award. She raises herford cattle on her family farm in Shelby and is involved in the North Carolina Junior Herford Association, where she volunteers at cattle sales and helps fundraise for the organization. She also reigned as the two thousand twenty-three North Carolina Herford Queen and was honored to represent the state of Junior Nationals in Wisconsin and at the National American Herford Convention in Kansas City. Belle plans to attend North Carolina State and major in business and ag marketing. Belle is quite active, and she does all of this while maintaining a four-point-four GPA. It is my honor, Commissioners, to introduce you to Belle Westbrook.
Good evening. Thank you for having me tonight. My name is Belle Westbrook, and I've had such an honor to serve as your one hundredth Miss Cleveland County Fair Queen. This year, I know that the fair took a little bit of a tassel with Mother Nature and Hurricane Helene, but I just want to say that I'm so proud that our board has worked so hard to open it up to where it is. I think that having such a community work together to open up such a fun time for others to enjoy is just a great thing, and I think that everyone enjoyed getting out of the house and spending time in their community and fellowship. I'd also like y'all to know that I'm a huge supporter of agriculture, and I do this through partnership with my school, but also on my family farm. And so if there's anything I can do to help support agriculture in the community, I would love to be a part of it. Thank you for having me tonight.
Thank you. Anybody on the board have any comments? Uh, thank you. We have a proclamation for you, and I'll come down and present that.
Yes. Two thousand twenty-four Cleveland County Fair Queen, Belle Westbrook. Whereas Belle Westbrook, a senior at Burns High School, won the crown as the two thousand twenty-four Cleveland County Fair Queen. And whereas, this teen, Belle Westbrook, has rep, has represented herself, her family, school, and community proudly, competing in cheerleading, serving on the Beta Club, National Honor Society, is an active member in the Future Farmers of America FFA program. And whereas, through her hard work and perseverance, she reigned as the two thousand twenty-three North Carolina Herford Queen, representing North Carolina at the Junior Nationals in Wisconsin and the National American Herford Connection in Kansas City, competing with class and dignity. And whereas, the demanding competition requires the highest levels of skill, determination, teamwork, and focus on selfless commitment to others. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners hereby commends, congratulates, and gives special recognition to Belle Westbrook for her extraordinary achievements and wishes her continued success in future endeavors, adopted this the fifteenth day of October, two thousand twenty-four.
Here we have one more tonight. At this time, it's a pleasure to recognize Commissioner Hutchins. Uh, he has a presentation on Metal Madness Competition. John?
If, if I may, I'm gonna ask the county office to range director to come to the podium.
Yes, sure. Santa?
Explain to us what Metal Madness is and what happened this past weekend.
All you to tell you something to do this?
It's on the agenda.
Thank you for having me. It's an honor to be here. So Metal Madness is a family-friendly competition. There are ten lanes of, um, shooting arrays. There are five targets in each array. Um, each array has targets number one through four with the stoplight. Um, you are scored on all ten lanes. We drop your worst two times and combine your other eight for an aggregate time. You are not competing against somebody else, but you're merely competing against yourself. And this was an activity that I thought that we could bring to the Foothills Public Shooting Complex to encourage new shooters to come out, introduce them to the shooting sports, and get families involved. Um, because you're not quote-unquote running and gunning like you would with USPSA or IDPA, um, you could get the grandfathers and the grandmothers out there to compete with their grandchildren. And it teaches them gun safety, gun control, and introduces them to the Second Amendment, which we promote here at the Foothills Public Shooting Complex. We also, um, have a family-friendly, safe environment in which they can come out and enjoy their firearms. So it took, um, I took three of my team members out to Paducah, Kentucky, where this game originated, and I am the first range in North Carolina to actually bring it here to North Carolina. And I have talked to the owner of Metal Madness and have asked him that if I can grow this sport the way I think I can grow this event, um, that I can have regionals here for five years consecutively without any competition from the surrounding states.
We got an email over the weekend. I'm gonna ask Phil to read it.
Okay. Um, I'm gonna add a little some of it, because I don't, I don't wanna repeat everything that you just explained. So this gentleman left, um, a very, uh, couldn't even think of what he, a great review of the Metal Madness. So this gentleman said, "I had a chance to shoot at the inaugural Metal Madness at the Foothills Public Shooting Complex in Sherriville, Cleveland County, and within a half an hour of arriving, I was texting every person and family I knew who could like, who would like to shoot more often, but are hesitant to get into more of the more formal games. Until I attended yesterday's Metal Madness, I pretty much considered Steel Challenge about as informal as one could get, outside plinking on one's own or without family." I was wrong. I can now attest Metal Madness is hands down the best and family-friendly environment at the public shooting foothills I've seen in a long time, and for a ton of otherwise shy, hesitant, and overly modest people to dip their toe into shooting with a group that is all safe, fun, and smiles. Another, uh, highlight about this event is the low noise levels, which is really conducive to new shooters, young and old, as well as many small children and families who may have to tag along and watch their older siblings or parents shoot. The cost is very reasonable at ten dollars per gun. Uh, yesterday, there were people of every age who were obviously new to shooting at an event, entire families of grandparents, parents, children, cousins, et cetera, as well as husbands and boyfriends who brought their wives and girlfriends to an event where they could feel relaxed, build confidence, and have fun. All twenty-two repeaters are welcome. Uh, he lists the type of guns that are, that are welcome. Yesterday's event at the, at this twenty-two was the accumulation of what has been a labor of love for the past two to three years, and is only going to get better with the covered range housing, two fields in the making. Um, there, for, for detailed what took, uh, he left a link on more of his review, but he continues to say, "I am not certain, but I assume the next Metal Madness at the Shoot Hills Putting, Foot Hill Shooting Public," your place, "will be the second Saturday of each month going forward." However, uh, he left a link and said again, "Thank you so much for, uh, the entire staff for a safe and family good time." Thank you.
It was. I, I went out and I shot it. First time I'd shot one in what, I made the comment out there, it was good to see families out there. They had their kids out there. And like it said in this review, that it's a twenty-two center fire, and it's reasonable price, so you can go out and enjoy it. And Sanders worked on this thing for about three years, and we got a grant to build a new bay and get it set up, and I think that this is gonna be one of the key opponents to the Foothill Shooting Complex in the future when we do get it finished and out.
And, yes, sir. And so two of the attendees at, um, Saturday's event were from Ruger. Uh, one of them happens to be a longtime friend of mine from the shooting sports that I have done for the last twenty-plus years. And when he left, he shook my hand, and he said, "Any event that you have at the Foothills Public Shooting Complex benefiting Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, Outdoor Heritage Children, if you need, um, firearms or ammunition, to please reach out to Ruger," and they would make sure that, um, I would be supplied with the materials so that these other organizations can enjoy and, um, support their children.
I know we featured Metal Madness, but I think it would be good to tell what other sports and that they can generate.
Um, so currently, right now, we have, um, skeet. We have a skeet event, um, on the fifth Saturday. We also host American Legion, which has a, uh, an AR competition on the fifth Saturday. And then we have Steel Challenge, and that is on the fourth Saturday of every month. Coming this spring, um, I have reached out to Steel Challenge, and I am hosting the first North Carolina State Steel Challenge event here in North Carolina. And I have a bid in for the Area Six, which incorporates everything from North Carolina to Alabama up to Virginia, um, to host that event here at the Foothills. And then I've got Shoot SIG, which is another organization that introduces, um, people to the shooting competitions. Um, coming out in March, um, they will have three bays, uh, three array of targets. They will also provide some of their pro shooters to come out and do demos for the public. Um, they're coming in March. North Carolina State is in April, and then in May, we are bringing back Glock, um, Glock's GSS event. Um, last year, due to the rain, uh, we only had four hundred and thirty-one firearms pass through, but the year before we had six hundred and thirty-one, and this year we're hoping to surpass seven hundred.
Also have archery.
Yes, sir. We, um, we, we have opened up our three-D archery range. Um, it is currently closed for the wintertime. We will open that back up in February, and I am talking to, um, Scholastic Three-D Archery to hold the state match here at the Foothills Public Shooting Complex along with ASA. Um, we also have two qualifiers for archery that will be happening for state and nationals, and we have the believers that are coming back. And last year, the first time out the gate at our range, we had a hundred and twenty-five competitors for archery.
Understand, too, there was a lot of scholarship money left on the table this past year for archery participants that didn't apply for, because they didn't have enough, I guess, participants for archery. So Pinnacle and the other schools are trying to build it up, so they are scholarships that you can get for the different events.
Yes, sir.
Well, I appreciate all the hard work you've done at the gun range. Appreciate this past weekend. I really enjoyed it, and, uh,
Good.
there just was a lot of events out there. Most Commissioners would love to attend it, but they had other commitments. So maybe the next time we have, we can, uh, get them out, maybe let them shoot.
Great. I would love to have them. Thank you all for having me tonight. I certainly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Do you have any, any comments or any questions? Does anyone would like to drag toward? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is public comment. Am I matter correct? No one signed up?
Correct.
So we're gonna forward the reading of the policy.
Yes, sir.
Next item is the consent agenda. Commissioners, we have been presented the consent agenda in our packets. We all should have reviewed those. At this time, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All here now, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Say no. Motion carries unanimous. Next item on the agenda is a couple of public hearings. Madam Clerk?
After the public hearing has been opened, citizen speakers will be acknowledged in the order in which they signed up to speak, and will address all comments to the Board as a whole and not one individual commissioner. Speakers will address the Board from the speaker's podium at the front of the room, and will begin their remarks by stating their name and address. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. A public hearing is not intended to require mem, the Board to answer any prompt to questions. Speakers are expected to be civil in their language and presentation. All comments from the speaker shall be directly related to the subject of the public hearing. Each speaker is allotted five minutes to address the Board. A speaker is not permitted to share, reserve, or relinquish any remaining time allocated to them to another speaker.
Thank you. First item is Plan Department Case twenty-four dash twelve. This is a request to rezone parcel five nine nine one eight, the residential, the rural residential. At this time, recognize Chris Martin.
Thank you, Chairman. Good evening, Board. Thanks for having me here tonight, and, uh, we've got a request for your consideration, um, from a property owner, and they're asking to change the zoning of a parcel of land, um, from a, a residential zoning district to a rural residential district. Parcel is number five nine nine one eight. Um, it's located at eight sixty-three Stony Point Road. The owners are David Bowman and Jennifer Bowman, who are also petitioners, and it's about three acres. And, uh, again, they're asking to rezone it from the regular residential district to the rural-style residential district. Difference between those two districts are that the regular allows half-acre lots, um, and then single-family dwellings, uh, and then modular homes and manufactured homes. While the rural residential, um, requires a one-acre minimum lot size, um, it also allows residential uses along with some supporting commercial uses that fit in with the rural it also allows residential uses along with some supporting commercial uses that fit in with the rural character of an area. This property being along Stony Point Road, the immediate area are, consists of larger tracts of land, single-family residential with some farm use in the area. The, there are some nearby communities such as Woodbridge Neighborhood with smaller lots. And then there's some more commercial, more commercially developed properties along Stony Point Road near the intersection of New Camp Creek Church Road and Stony Point Road. So you really have a variety of uses through this area as you expand past the immediate area. You can see the zoning district also shows several different colors. This parcel is white along with most of the area around it to the south of it. That's the regular residential. The yellow shows restricted residential, and you can see the Woodbridge Neighborhood northwest of the property. And then when you get closer to Oak Grove Stony Point Road, you'll see some commercial uses and commercial districts. Our land use plan, the long-range vision for this property is primary growth. That designation consists of more intense uses. It's expected to have more growth in this area. But you can see with the light green color, there is some nearby secondary growth in this area that is more residential in nature. We've presented this item to the planning board, and they recommend approval. And they noted that it's near that secondary growth and in more of a transition zone between those two designations. And they, they thought that it would fit in with the land use plan. They think that rezoning to rural residential would help that property be, it would help it be more development-friendly since it's a large track with a floodplain covering up half of the property. And I can answer any questions. And for your action tonight, there will be a public hearing involved. And then you can approve or deny the application.
Thank you, Chris. Does the Board have any questions? All right. With that, at this time, we'll, let me get situated here. So at this time, we'll open the public hearing. So now the public hearing, the public hearing is now open. And Madam Clerk, if I'm correct, no one signed up to speak?
You are correct, sir. No one signed up.
Okay. So now the public hearing is closed. Members of the Board, the question is back to us.
If I'm correct, we have changed the zoning on this before for something similar. And it seems to be consistent, and the planning board approved it, and no one seems to have a problem with it. So I'd like to make the motion that we approve.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve, and it's been properly seconded. Is there any other discussion? I hear no. If anyone will say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Chris. Next public hearing is Economic Development. At this time, I recognize Ms. Courtney Ashley to come up and go over Project GWE.
You got the pronunciation.
What's that?
So you nailed the pronunciation.
Yeah.
It's a complicated name.
Read letters.
Harder than you'd think. Good evening, Chairman and Board Commissioners. Thank you so much for having me here tonight. I'm excited to share with you some information about Project GWE. So it represents a company looking to locate a new operation in Cleveland County in the Job Ready Shell Building Number Four. They are looking to purchase the facility. They are going to create 113 new jobs on an average wage of right at $62,000. They are looking to do about a $286.5 million capital investment over four years. So CCEP recommends supporting Project GWE through the following, which would be entering into a contract for the sale of the Job Ready Shell Building Number Four for a purchase price of $10 million. This price represents a reasonable fair market value, which has been, which has been conducted based on current market conditions and vacancy rates that has been completed by us. We also recommend supporting Project GWE through a local incentive grant for five years at 20% at the current tax rate. You can see here how that ends up with their total cumulative investment amount. That number's wrong at the bottom. It should be 286.506. Like I said, that's based on the current county rate. And after the public hearing, we recommend that you either adopt or deny resolution authorizing the sale of the property and then adopting or denying resolution authorizing the economic development incentive.
Thank you, Courtney. Any questions on the Board?
I need to explain the sale of the building we're doing on.
Correct.
The whole amount of the kind.
Correct, yes. And they've already approved that sale price as well.
They could have, and they could.
Pay off the debt.
We're only advised.
Pay off the debt.
Pay off the debt.
So we don't split it up. Can't think of nothing. All right. So with that, we are required to have a public hearing. So at this time, I'll declare the public hearing open. Madam Clerk, yet again, I'm correct. No one signed up to speak?
You are correct.
So the public hearing is now closed. Members of the Board, do we have any questions? Or is there any further discussion?
I'd like, it's gonna be a win-win for us and the county because we've been very successful with the shell buildings we've had this for a while. So we get our money out of it, make a little bit, and we get the, the jobs to be created over the four years. With this amount that they're being paid is above the county average. So I think it's a win-win for us.
Is that a motion?
If there's no other questions, I make a motion that we accept it.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion seconded. Any further discussion? I hear no. If anyone will say aye. Anyone opposed? My motion carries unanimous. This building was a blessing for us. It's been serving as a storage area for storm-related supplies and which we will be out of well in advance. Yes. For the sale of this. Good, good work on that, David.
And Mr. Chair, when will there be an announcement telling us who is going into the building?
When is the announcement?
There's still, will be, what is it, 60-day due diligence period. It's probably around December.
So we'll be out, well, I think the EM has to be out by the end of November 30. Okay. So next item, we're down to the regular agenda. At this time, I recognize Jamie Bridges. He's gonna come forward and speak about stream flow rehabilitation assistance program. Jamie?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Commissioners, for allowing me to come and share with you tonight. I am Jamie Bridges. I work with the Cleveland County Soil and Water Conservation Office. And I'm here tonight on behalf of the Cleveland County Soil and Water Conservation District to talk to you about the Stream Flow Rehabilitation Assistance Program. This is a program that was created by our General Assembly back in 2022. They did fund it for that year. 2023, they didn't fund it. But they have decided in 2024 to put some money into it. And the primary purpose for this, for this program is to help reduce flooding, restore streams, and protect the integrity of drainage, drainage infrastructure. And this money goes, does go to organizations who are interested in doing that. Back in 2023, when there was no money, the Cleveland County Soil and Water Conservation Office was contacted regarding some vegetative debris that was blocking two segments of creek. One was on the First Broad River above Highway 10. The other was on Hinton Creek, where there were down trees causing a lot of stream bank erosion and also increasing the potential for flooding. Our office staff went out to look at these two areas. We took some pictures. This is a picture of the First Broad River. Like I said, this is just above the bridge there on Highway 10. This is probably the largest blockage. There's another one down below it that's a little smaller. But you can notice on the, the far side of the, the riverbank there, all the erosion that's taking place as the water is beginning to try to make its way around all that debris. This is another picture here. You'll notice that fence line there originally was about 10 to 15 feet away from the original stream bank. Once again, it's, now it's just hanging out there about 10 to 15 feet in the air where that stream has, has beginning to try to cut a new channel and all that sediment's just going down into the river. We also looked at some places on Hinton Creek. This is right above the bridge on 226. There are several blockages that look very similar to that, along with just a lot of other logs and debris there in the stream channel. And, and so the Cleveland County Soil and Water Conservation District, when the strap, found out the strap program was gonna be funded, we did apply for $514,000 to clear vegetative debris on these two sections of, of the river. Unfortunately, we did not get the total amount that we requested. We got about a fifth of it, which was $101,020. It's what they have, have said that Cleveland County can be awarded. This money, I talked with our district board, and, and they feel like that the best use would be to go to these two segments and just use, since it's a smaller amount of money, just focus our attention on, on the worst sections of those, of those streams. And so this is originally what we applied for. This is the Broad River section. It's about 5,000 feet. Here's Highway 10. This is where the new canoe launch was put in there above, or there at Brackett Cedar Park. And so we were hoping to be able to clean that. These are where the two log jams were. So we're gonna focus most of our attention on those two areas. And then on Hinton Creek, if you're not aware, Hinton Creek just last year was put on the state's 303D list. So it's now considered an impaired stream here in our county. And mostly because of turbidity, which is sediment in the water. And we feel a lot of that is being contributed from these down trees and stuff that's causing the stream bank erosion. This is the section of Hinton Creek that we applied for. It's about a 9,000-foot stretch. This is Hollis Road, and it goes from just right below Hollis Road over to 226. And so once again, we're gonna be trying to focus our attention on these, these worst spots to just see how far that money goes. And so the Cleveland Soil and Water Conservation District would like to request the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners to approve the strap contract in the amount of $101,020 to be used for clearing vegetative debris from these two stream segments. Thank you.
Do we have any questions?
With, as Phil just come through, what effect it's had on the creeks and whatever?
I, I would say that if we, and we have gone out and looked at quite a few, and they're, they're in pretty bad shape as far as how much, how many trees and, and things are down across them. There, there's a lot of vegetative debris, you know, blocking up not just these two stream segments, but there's a lot of other ones as well, especially after that hurricane came through.
FEMA would have with?
I, I don't know that FEMA would help with the, the clean out of the river. I know the strap program does that. The USDA Natural Resource Conservation Service has a program called the Emergency Watershed Protection Program, EWP. And one of its primary purposes is to remove debris from, from stream channels as well as do stream stabilization where there's big areas of erosion, as well as stream restoration work if that's needed. And it especially works in areas where, where the erosion and the flooding is gonna affect infrastructure, like gas lines, that type of thing, so.
No other question. I make a motion to release the money.
I've got a question. Is the one, another Broad River is a pretty good tract of water, but the Hinton Creek don't look as big. Is it on privately-owned land?
Both of these segments are, there, there are multiple landowners. But, but yes, it is on privately loaned, excuse me, owned land. And that's one of the things that we had to consider when we were looking at, you know, which stream segments we could, would be able to use, you know. Would the landowners be willing to allow us to come out there and bring track hose? And, you know, some of these areas are gonna have to have roads cut in, and then that debris is gonna have to be removed. It has to be, the, the contract says it has to be removed at least out of the 100-year floodplain. That can be just moved and piled off-site. If the landowners don't want that to happen, it can be burned or chipped. But yes, they are, it is private landowners who want all of that property, except for one little section there on the Broad River. It is owned by the Cleveland County water there where the.
Is, well, if it's on privately-owned property, why is it not the responsibility of the, the landowners to take care of their property?
Well, it's, it's in the waters of the state, and of course, the waters of the state, I mean, it, it could be. You know, you could say it's the landowner's responsibility. But the state of North Carolina has said that there's a benefit for us going in here and being able to clean this out just for, for flood protection is one of the main reasons, and also for sedimentation. So, you know, if you look at the First Broad River where all that sediment has come and it's in, in the river, then it runs down a few miles and it gets to the, the intake there for Cleveland County water. And all that mud and sediment has to be cleaned out, and that expense is passed on to, not just to, to the county. And so that's one of the reasons why the state feels that this is not just a benefit for those landowners, but this is a benefit for the whole community. And so that's why they're able, that's why they're funding it this way.
Well, I can see the damage, and I can understand the reasoning there. But if the state is gonna mandate that it needs to be done, why does the state not wanna pay for it?
I, I think the, you'd have to talk to the General Assembly about that. So they're the ones who fund it, so.
Do you think there will be more funds made available since the hurricane came through and the dam, the extra damage? Because it sounds like y'all were looking at this before then.
This was prior to that, for sure. I'm not exactly sure through the strap program. I know that the North Carolina Soil and Water Commission, who was, where this is administered, this program is administered through, they have called a meeting for tomorrow morning at 8 o'clock to talk about the, the response to the storm. So there may be some talk of moving some more money in for projects like this. And I know as far as from the federal side, the EWP program, the Natural Resource Conservation Service is, is looking now about getting it approved in the counties that have been declared disaster counties, which of course, Cleveland County is one of those. So we, we hope to see that, that happen soon as well.
Maybe we should back up again. This is a state program, so this is not county money.
Right. This is, this is a state program. They, they've got this money, and it is. And most, a lot of the state programs that come through our office are cost-share programs where, you know, the landowner will pay 25% and the state will cover 75% of the conservation practice. This, however, is 100% on the state. The landowner, it doesn't cost them anything.
I just wanted to make sure we clear.
Right, and there is no cost.
All you're asking is for the county to accept the $100,000 grant.
The state says it's $101,020.
And you're gonna spend it on those two areas.
Do you want it?
And I guarantee if you don't take it, another county would. And I can give you some background on that help. The state prioritizes it by risk of flooding with adjacent properties. And so, for example, Canton, that you saw get flooded yet again, they had done a lot of clearing out. And because of that clearing, it wasn't as bad as it would have been. So, and traditionally, in the eastern part of the state, this is more of an issue than it usually is in our part of the state. But Colleen's kinda throwing all that up in the air this time, too. Like at the Tar River, Cape Girardeau Basin, those, that's where it's a really big issue in particular.
I'll, I'll second the motion to approve it.
Did we actually have?
Oh, I thought Johnny made the motion. I'll second. I wouldn't want to give any hard time. I just, I was just wanting some education.
Absolutely.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Hudson to accept the money and allocate that for the stream remediation. And second by Commissioner Whitstone. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions or discussion? If anyone will say aye. Anyone opposed? Thank you, Jamie. Good luck.
Thank you all so much. We appreciate it.
All right. Next item is board appointments. I believe we have one tonight, right? Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
We don't have a sheet, so I'll give this, turn this over to you.
Yes, sir. So Board, as you know, we have a vacancy on the planning board. A member has moved out of state, so that, that member's seat is open. We have another member who currently serves on the Board of Adjustment, Ms. Denise Wright, who has expressed her request to come off the Board of Adjustment. And if it's the Commissioner's desire to have her, she is willing to serve on the planning board, filling the remaining spot of the previous person who held that spot.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? I hear no. If anyone will say aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone opposed? My motion is clear. Next item is closed session. Pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven, A6, to consider the qualifications, competency, performance, character, fitness, conditions of employment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee, or prospective public officer or employee, without any motion to enter closed session based on that reference.
So moved.
Or second?
Second.
All in favor will say aye.
No.
Anyone opposed? All right, the boards, a closed session, and we'll reconvene. The board. Alright, the board's in closed session and we reconvene into order. Okay. With that, let me make this before we call for the adjournment of the next meeting, that the Cleveland County Board of Commissioners will meet Tuesday, November the 12th, 2024, 6 p.m. here in the Commissioners' chamber. With that, my entertainer motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Yep, you got one.
Any discussion?